Lady's and gentlemen, in the previous session, the participants have conducted a discussion based on the topic assigned for each group. And now, we will start the town hall meeting session. Allow me to start by welcoming our moderator, Nabila Gunawan, Suesel of Sustainable and Liveable Planet. Hi Nabila, how are you today?
I'm good. I'm excited to hear what everyone here has to say about-
Thank you to Nabila to conduct this session. The time is yours.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, and good morning all the participants who are going to deliver your agenda today. I'm going to lead this discussion. And before we start, I would like to emphasize on certain things. First of all, this is, we encourage you to speak your mind. So please don't feel that you have to disagree with- Please let us know if the audio is good. We want to make sure-
This is Mo Prayogo, representative from Group 1. Thank you. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for this chance. So, we wanna share about our discuss, about our discuss from Group 1. Our topic is circular economy based on sustainable and production and consumption. We know, there are so many good regulations that what we believe. For example, in Indonesia, there are so many good regulations and policies. For example, based on Ministry of Industry of the Republic of Indonesia, they have a 5R: reduce, reuse, recycle, and also recovery and repair. And then, we are focused on reduce. Reduce that government regulation Balikpapan City to reduce regarding reduction of plastic packaging. And then, we know there are so many regulations and policies that I said before. So, the circular economy based on sustainable production and consumption, we believe that is one of solution and the solution to youth can give for our planet to show, to show, to show how really care we are to this planet. And we believe there's integrated between circular economy and some points of sustainable development goals, such as Point 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Design work and economic growth, industry innovation, sustainable cities and communities, responsible consumption and production, climate action, life below water and life inland. And then, our conclusion is promoting sustainable lifestyle through zero store or bookstore by campaign is for raising awareness for everyone to, like I said before, to save our planet too. And then, we know and we believe that because I said before, there are so many good regulations and policies that I strongly believe that it's really hard to change people's habit. And it's so easy to make a new regulation, but what else? Says, can we say about that? And so, try to strongly believe that we can change their habits to make a circular economy to replace the linear economy. Think that's it. Thank you for everyone.
Okay, so you are promoting a shift of habit in the consumption pattern of the society. And you, thank you. Pardon you for that. Okay. Thank you very much, Aldi. I will now go to the next table. Where is table number? Oh, right here. And before we start again, I would like to remind everyone that you guys have 3 minutes. So, once the 3 minutes passes, I unfortunately have to stop you. So, just a heads up. And who will be speaking from this table? And could you please say your name and where you're from? Which city are you from? And the topic?
Test, test. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Avan Aswin. I will present about our discussion result in Group 2. The first question that our group discussed, what the possible action that young people can do to promote and support responsible consumption of resources? The first thing the young people can do is speak up about this too in the social media, communities, and the international forum like now. And the second thing we can do is change our lifestyle, our behavior to overconsume natural resources, such as getting used to turning off during like, during the day, using enough water, and reducing fuel consumption. We believe that small change that people make in their daily lives can make big positive impact to on our planet. The second question is, would preserving natural capital at high economic cost is just viable? From our discussion, we believe that for now, is paying more now is better than losing big in the future. But with non-condition, the fund allocated are right on the target. Funding is focused on renewable energy innovation, such as cost of producing equipment, infrastructure, and human resources. And the next question is, what support policies should the government make to create to stable climate? The Ministry of Energy and Mineral Resources states that are 2,741 illegal mining sites in Indonesia. And 96 of them are coal mining and the rest of them are mineral mining. This shows that there are many violations that occur due to lack of government supervision and lack of firms in implementing policies. The first thing government should do is strengthen the applicable policies. The second thing is government can do is create an environmental-based education curriculum that in Balikpapan has implemented. The education children in elementary school about environmental and by educating student in the elementary school, this will make a daily habit that will become the part of solution that will change the climate change in the future. And the fifth question is, what should government do in the mitigation, adaptation, and climate crisis? We believe that what government do is not only supporting renewable energy, but also reducing energy consumption itself. For example, making city plans that support public transportation, that the use of private vehicle is reduced and the climate crisis is slowly resolved. That's all from our group discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, climate change is not something we can solve alone and we can solve in 1 year. But the climate change is a topic that we can solve together, the government, the youth, and the people itself. And this solution will have many years to overcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, that's okay. I have this. Thank you very much. That ended at a very hopeful note. So, we cannot achieve, we cannot find a solution for climate change alone. Youth has to work with the government and the private sector. And you brought up a very, very important topic on like, making sure that the funding is well-targeted to renewable project and infrastructure, as well as very important, the importance of government oversight, especially in mining violation. Thank you very much for your point. I am going to go to Group number 3. Hello. Hi, what's your name? Oh.
Okay, my name is Mohamad Fikir Alafit and I am proudly standing here as the spokesperson of the third group. And we are currently discussing pertaining the circular economy. Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, as we all know that products and waste are ubiquitous, right? And it is interchangeable. So, it goes side by side with one another. And it can be found everywhere. And it has already reached a concerning amount. From the data of kaltim.go.prof in Balikpapan itself, the amount of waste during pandemic is enormous. It has already reached a whopping amount of 400 tons per day. And it is only a scale of local. And if we scale it international and internationally, it will be bigger. It will be more enormous than the local versions. So, based on that data, we need to agree first that not only us and our technology who are improving, but also the problems is also evolving with us. So, when we are still a child, we know that not littering is a noble cause, right? Not littering and throwing the rubbish at his own place is a noble cause. But nowadays, it is not contextual anymore, ladies and gentlemen. We need to change that mind to be a recyclable mine of the waste itself. So, therefore, the waste management and the landfills can be organized better. Ladies and gentlemen, the goal stated by the Konservasi Alam of Nusantara that by 2030, we increase the economy by 8% and reduce emissions by 100 tons of CO2. And that is the goals that we strive to reach. How, ladies and gentlemen? We need all hands on deck. We need a system to unite the stakeholders, to unite the government, to unite the private sectors, and to increase the mindsets of our youth and our people itself. So, therefore, we would like to propose 2 targets, ladies and gentlemen. The first one is the short-term target. And the second one is the long-term one. So, let me clarify about the first, the short-term proposals that we have is the shift or the improvement of our national laws regarding waste and waste management, as it is one of the root of systemic poverty in Indonesia, ladies and gentlemen. So, what we would like to implement is regulations that the company needs to implement the circular economy for at least 1% of their basic raw materials. So, at least 10%, and it will be increased in each passing years in order for them to be granted permission of the green financing and then the permission to operate in our country, ladies and gentlemen. Therefore, it will incentivize the local companies that use recyclable material as their basis materials. The second ones are the long-term planning, the long-term targets are the shift of educations for our next generation, ladies and gentlemen. We are youth, we still would like to concern about our next generation, the next generation of youth. So, therefore, we need the shift of the textbook itself and poster that said recycle are far better than not littering. So, therefore, the children are nurtured with that point of view and they will grow with new noble view of recycling and waste management. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Just give them a round of applause. I would also like to remind all the people who will be speaking that there is a timer over there and I will start the timer and end it at 3 minutes. We have, so sorry, we want to hear from everyone. So, we want to make sure everyone keeps at 3 minutes. And to recap, I think one interesting point is to tie financing to green metrics, which I think this table is already thinking like an investor, how to allocate green financing and make sure that they're complying to environmental requirements. And I'm going to move to table 4 over here. Who will be the- Hi.
Is it okay if I wear the mask?
It's okay. It's completely okay. And please introduce yourself and then we're going to start the 3-minute timer.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Aldi. I'm the representative from Group 4. I'm from Samarinda.
Okay, from Samarinda.
Yeah.
Floor is yours?
Okay, thank you. Good morning, all delegates, observers, and town hall participants. I'm Aldi again. I'm the representative from Group 4. Group 4 have the topic talking about safeguarding natural capital. So, as we know, safeguarding natural capital is related to how to think forward about nature should not harm the indigenous people. So, we found something that really interesting to talk about here. It's in Kar Sangkurilang, which we know, Kar Sangkurilang is one of the UNESCO World Heritage. So, it's located in Iskutim and Braw. We found here there is a palm company invasion that citizen don't have the choices because they need to make a living. So, somehow, they need to sell our dorian their land for the palm company. Actually, for this issue, government already did something about it. So, they already educate the citizen to make another way to make a living by making non-widowed products. They already did that. And it's already happening for 5 years. But it seems like the progress is not that significant. So, we would like to recommend a solution here by giving the chance to local- Sorry, to local community and cooperate with the youth to take part in government initiative. Something like that. And then, we also believe that, again, thinking forward about the nature should not hurt indigenous people. Okay, that's from us. Thank you. Before I close the presentation, I would like to inform that it is one of the GIO Park. And then, like, there's already a merchant from GIO Park. So, all the participant will have the merchant like this? Okay, so, yeah, just wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so, to recap, you brought up a very important point about grassroots and people on the margin, that indigenous should be at the center of any environmental and development. And the second, actually, very important to our entire forum is youth inclusion. How to put young people at the center of decision-making, which was also brought by our panel yesterday as well, on how to include youth meaningfully. So, I will go to the table 6.
Hi.
Hi, please introduce yourself and I will start the timer after introduction.
Okay, hi everyone. My name is Saka and I'm a medical student. And I'm here representing Group 6 talking about safeguarding natural capital. Okay, so safeguarding natural capital in Group 6 has answered 4 questions. First of all, what is the possible actions can be taken by youth for responsible consumption? We proposed 3 solutions. First of all, we're going to spread awareness to society. But second of all, we want to support local businesses who share the same concerns about the environment because we want more environmental-friendly products in the market and we can alter market's preference at the end of the day. But third of all, we want to implement pre-order purchasing systems. In pre-order purchasing systems means 2 things, right? First of all, consumers know supplies are limited and will determine how many products they demand according to their needs. And second, business owners will produce products only precisely as demanded by consumers, right? At the end of the day, this will create an effective mechanism of responsible consumption and production, right? But second question is that, what is the solution that can be proposed by youth to create awareness about land degradation? We want to do a collaboration called Pentahelix Energy, which involve 5 parties, right? First of all, academics. Second of all, businessmen. Third of all, media. Fourth of all, communities. And the last one is NGOs or non-governmental organizations, right? But third question is that, what policies should the government take for a sustainable and stable climate and other things? We want to do 2 things. First of all, we want to support people on the front line consisting of indigenous society, indigenous people, and forest police and stuff. But second of all, we want to we want to form an independent institution that at the end of the day will supervise companies when they report their annual GHG emissions. Because we know together that companies can still manipulate their data. So, we need to have an independent institution in order to supervise these companies at the end of the day, right? But lastly, we want the- What the government should do to mitigate climate disasters consists of 5 steps that we proposed. First of all, we want to have risk identification. Second of all, planning. Third of all, development of disaster awareness. Fourth of all, disaster management. And fifth, implementation of physical and non-physical efforts. To close my statement, I want to encourage every young people in this room to vote for politicians who actually cares about environmental issues. Because at the end of the day, only in this way can our intention to safeguard our natural capital have a sufficient political support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This table brought up a lot of interesting point about collaboration and the model that we can adopt for collaboration. You also mentioned that private sector participation is very important. However, it is also important to provide good oversight to them so they ensure that they meet the greenhouse gas target. And then, there is an innovative idea about supply and consumption model. So, matching the consumption with the supply to ensure that they don't overproduce or overconsume. That was excellent. Thank you very much. I will move to table 5. Okay, this is on circular economy? Okay. Please introduce yourself and I will, we will start the timer.
Okay, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, all the delegates. And also, good morning, Town Hall Participant Meeting and the Committee. I'm Shalte Peronika. As the representative of Group 5 will deliver our FDD result. So, according to 2020 Circuit Report from Circularity Gap Reporting Initiatives, or CGRI, there's decreased progress of implementing circular economy in the world, which is from 9.1% in 2018 to 1.6% in 2020. Based on that, our group thinks that we should transform linear economy to circular economy should start from should start from building responsible consumption behavior. But we face some challenges, which are, here is the main challenges that we already discussed. First, conservative mindset because a lot of people, also in Indonesia, still have conservative or maybe fixed mindset. And then, we still lack of supportive and environment and society. And last, we still lack of good infrastructure to support to building the habit. Okay. Therefore, we are from Group 5 humbly propose some recommendations. First is to raising awareness. We hope that government encourage awareness to start from school and also from the family because everything that starts from ourselves, also from school, is a good is a good steps to start building this habit. Also, we encourage the government to urge companies to add circular economy in their KPI or key performance indicator as their goals and objective. And the second is, we propose running educational program, which is to add sustainable or climate change as school curriculum for every level, elementary, junior, and high school. And then, we hope that government can give and provide technical training for educational practitioner also. Last is to provide good infrastructure. So, we encourage government to ensure all the facilities and infrastructure available for everyone so we can build this habit and by supporting based on the infrastructure that already available. I think that's enough from us. We realize that there's still lacks from our recommendation, but we believe that transforming the linear to circular economy will help our earth recover together, recover stronger. Thank you very much. That's all from Group 5.
Thank you very much. You close on the- Sorry. I will recap the points that Table 5 have delivered. So, education is key, which was also actually echo from several of the groups. Education on Environment, promoting education in young people, as well as technical assistance in the educators. And ensuring, encouraging, asking the government to encourage circular economy production. Those are the 2 key points from that table. And now, we are going to move to- We're going to hear from the delegates' response. So, I would like to invite Nashin, the delegation of Indonesia, to respond to the presentation.
Thank you, Nabila. And thank you so much to everyone really for such incredible work and for summarizing it. I know it's difficult to get it all in in 3 minutes, but really appreciate those efforts. I think we heard some amazing proposals addressing both sides of it. So, you know, there is the consumption side that we must address. And I think many of this is talking about awareness and what people can do on an individual level. These are really important things to address. And on the other side, which I'm really glad we saw, is the production side of it as well. That means, what are the types of infrastructures that are set up to allow for behavior change to be easy? So, for example, just as a simple example, in today's conference, we do not have the option of plastic bottles that already makes it easier for us as consumers to choose the easier option. And so, those types of decisions can only be made at the policy and government level. And I'm really glad that these recommendations were brought up by some of the groups. Also, thank you, everyone, for bringing up very local examples from the mining, to the palm oil, to the regulations that are already there and the challenges in implementation. Certainly, I think this is another thread that we saw. Sometimes, the policies are there. The finance is there. The difficulty is the implementation and the accountability. We also found some really great suggestions on accountability in mandating, for example, certain KPIs from companies, organizing institutions for these to be accountable so that they can't be... There's sort of an auditing process, right? Like, we have auditing for finance. We should also have like an auditing for this kind of reporting. Another consideration that can play into that is also transparency. So if we want to have accountability, we could complement that with transparency. For example, with, not only with the institutions that was suggested by Group 6, but also with complementing that with open data and transparency that can be shared. And so everyone is held accountable. Finally, I think another thing that was addressed really well by the last group especially is the question of access. Going back to the supply side is that if, and I think another group here, I think it was Group 2 mentioned it as well, that if our cities are planned better, it also makes the consumption easier of renewable sources. And when public transport is made easier to use than private transport, consumers are more likely to make that decision. So both of these things need to go hand in hand. It's not totally up to the consumer to change their behavior. It also must be complemented by policy. And I think this was covered quite really, really comprehensively and well today. And finally, I think the point that was mentioned, everybody, and sort of summarized in the last one, the Penta Helix approach, or we can even elaborate to say the Poly Helix approach, where we involve all stakeholders, bringing in local voices to the forefront. I think that's an amazing point to consider and to push forward. And finally, the last point that was mentioned about voting for politicians. I think that's sort of also the trajectory we are thinking about. What comes after this communique? Is that the most effective thing that we can do is organize ourselves and demand the change we want. That's going to create the systemic change that we need. And so I think that was an incredible proposal, that the change must start from the ground up. But then it's from the ground that that will move upwards through organizations like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nasheen. And I think we will have the emcee to go... Oh, the floor, back to the floor. Thank you very much, Nasheen. I would like to now throw it to the floor, to the participants here, to respond to Nasheen's discussion. Yes, we have someone from...
Hi, Jack. Thank you. Okay, good morning, everyone, delegates and distinguished panel participants. My name is Muhammad Ajun, and I'm from, representative of the Group of 11. All right. I really want to just like follow up discussion. I'm really amazed with all of the discussion regarding the Group 1 until Group 6. For those about discussing about the safeguarding national capital. But you guys are mentioning about the how the company is going to should works and how to the lack of the availability of the government to implementing the policy and how about the lack of the access to the funding and funding mechanism through this issue. But I look forward to discussion about regarding the questions that the most problem that we face in the East Kalimantan is all about the increase of the illegal mining practices in Indonesia. We know it's going to be faced in the future is about the building the new capital city in Indonesia, in the East Kalimantan, first of all. And the main problem is, I want to ask about the these illegal mining practices is going to be a long issues that's going to be affecting entirely of the development capital itself. Because it's just like the many alibis since 2010 until now. It's just like the alibi, just like lands monopoly, bureaucracy, just like corrupt politics between the government and the local communities and indigenous people. I will ask about for those groups that who asking, discussing about the safeguarding capital. Regarding the, do we need the independent institution to supervise those kind of company that will grow in those kind of mineral and also producing the color for the market itself? Do we need the independent research? Do we need independent institution to make sure this is going to be help us to through the development of a new capital city itself? Because the main problem that I look before is the origins of the participation of the company itself. How the company is responsible? Is it responsible enough for our land? And is it responsible enough to our bureaucracy of the government? Is it just like the lack of availability of the Ministry of Energy, Ministry of Infrastructure to tackle this issue itself? Do we need the institutional research about to supervise that kind of the problem itself? And I look forward to answer from the group, those kind of group who discuss about the safeguarding capital, about the how can actually we can implementing the policy itself regarding the spread awareness and also how should be technicality about to maximize our youth participation in through of this development opportunity in the new capital city in Indonesia, East Kalimantan. So I believe that's my questions and my elaborate about my response of the comprehensively discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think we will have time for one more participant to voice their concern, and then Nasheen will respond. Yes. Hi.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Nurmut Aida. I come from Group 2, which is talking about here in front of our friends that maybe we have some question like this. Every single year, the country around the world talking about this issue, sustainable and liveable planet. And also, white swanie held in every single year, in every single place. There must be a policy present in every single discussing to be the result. So the main point of my question is, what is the post-action after the delegate from any country talking about the issue come from any country? And then what should we going to do after we got the post-action? Because we just look like this. I read about the previous result about the issue and the result of the G20 summit. And then I still thought thinking about why the country around just get the result? Why we don't do a post-action after this? So what should we going to do to do post-action? And for Nasheen itself, what is your plan for Indonesia itself to do the post-action for it? So we are at the youth of Indonesia can apply this to our life and also we can do it repeatedly day by day? And we can, what is that? We can get our future, what was that? I was so sorry for that. We can get our future program in the 2020, in the 2050, we can free of life in this country and also in this place. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Those are very excellent questions. So one about the new capital city and one about, a very important one on implementation after the forum. Nasheen, the floor is yours.
Thank you both for two amazing questions on amazing topics. I'll address this one first about the what happens next. I think this is really important. It's something that IYD has been thinking about, about the continuity. I think the way we frame it, the communique is not the last thing that comes out of this delegation. It is the first thing. It's the thing that we can use to start, use that as a baseline document. We will share it with everybody so that this is something that for all of us to use so that we can collectively organize, lobby our governments, speak to the organizations that have the capacity to make that change and demand that from the ground up. And so this is some of the plan moving forward. Definitely, we see this as a first engagement. And I hope that we will continue our discussions, we will continue this organization so that we can move that forward and ensure that this is seen in the long term and not something that's just written, left behind, and forgotten about. Thank you for bringing up a really important point. And to address the issue of the capital city. Yes, I think there are about 96 abandoned coal mining pits in the site of the new capital. These are issues that are not light, things that we must address. How do we be accountable for this? I think is an incredibly important question. Perhaps it's a difficult one for me to answer directly. I think there needs to be change that comes from a much larger scale at the policy level. And I agree, it's like how do we hold these accountable so that when we say that we are building a green city, it really is a green city for everybody involved? And that we are taking into account, there are not only illegal mining sites, there are abandoned mining sites in this site as well. What are we going to do to address that? I think one of the things that's incredible is that it is being voiced, first of all, starting from conversations like this today. And the more that we are able to voice these concerns, that adds pressure. And it's not only pressure from the ground up, but when we can coordinate ourselves within our communities, within Kalimantan. But then, what about when we coordinate with other, with our neighboring countries as well? So that collectively, we put increased pressure to increase accountability and transparency of these policies that are there. But clearly, there's a issue in implementation. And so I think this is where it starts. Thank you so much for bringing that point, and we'll work through this together, I'm sure of that.
Thank you very much, Nasheen, for your response. We will now continue the round of discussion and start with Table 7. Please introduce yourself, and then we will start the three-minute timer. Can we turn on the audio, please?
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Luthfi. I'm a social welfare student, and I'm representing Group 7. In here, we talking about the circular economic base on sustainable production and consumption. In here, we propose for you some point. And in the first place, we propose to you to reducing the gap of the prices between the sustainable and non-sustainable plastic products. Because of why? Because in here, we realize that the moment we have to the market, the moment we realize the sustainable product is tend to be more pricey due to the lack of the resources, the technology, and the society who were to use that. Because it simply is not a populist target market of the company itself, right? And also in here, we want to embrace the use of the sustainable product by lower its price based on the tax redemption, for example, or subsidies or incentive. And we want to make the higher price for the non-sustainable production so it could be less likely to be used by the society in the wide range. Okay, let's move to the second point. In here, we want to giving the space to you to create a liveable and sustainable planet because of what it have the continuity with the previous pre-summit, which what we mean by the opportunities is we need the youth to transform into the government. We need the youth to transfer to government to create more contextualized paradigm of the development. Because we think the paradigm of development in the current situation is only exists and only around about the human and the capital itself. But we think, as on the midly said, the new paradigm of development is not only about the capital and the human only, but also about the planet itself. So we need the new youth people to run the sustainability of this mission into the future because the youth is the next young leader as well, right? And the third one, we think we want to campaign and create a reinforcement for the society to create more sustainable lifestyles, as we give a rewarding system into the society or the corporation. For example, we give a tax redemption. We want to challenge the youth to innovate. And also, we want to create the better lifestyle by influencing the youth and the society by the influence on the power of the social media, of the technology of the era, right? And the fourth one, we want to filtering and encouraging the locality aspect of the society. Because we believe that the locality of the society is the one, the aspect that can help the sustainability of our attempts and our mission into the future. Because the moment the attempt is not suitable with the society, it will not work at all, right? And the fifth one, we expect the government to stop to interdualize everyone, every city in this, every city in the world. We want to pay to government to create the paradigm that it's okay if the city is not have a skyscraper or factory. We want the government to push the development into the green one, to the sustainability one. We want the government to leave the green town into the green town and not have any intervention to create it, to make it into the industry area. So I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Group 7. You made up a very ambitious and aspirational point about shifting the economic paradigm beyond extractive, beyond capital intensive. I thought that was very, very interesting. Thank you very much. Now, we will move to Group 8. Who will be the speaker?
This, Cakap.
Sorry, please introduce yourself, and then I will start the two-minute timer.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Buala Jeffrey. I come from Balikpapan. And the solution happened because we are the local youth. And we would like to particularly address this local and national issues. Well, this is our voices. First of all, we would like to emphasize about information transparency, especially about policies, portfolio, and real-time changes about our national development projects. We surely don't want having cut in the sex project, especially the one that will change our daily life. Next, we would like to increasing the awareness, this one, about the river and ocean fishery usage and especially to accelerating the implementation of blue economy policy. And besides that, we hope to updating the system to cover the data of our biodiversity. And we need to fix, sorry, the last one, our policy gap. And maybe one of the example is the usage of green stationary on our government body. Next, we would like to propose initiation of our youth community. Yeah, initiation of our movement in community, especially in youth. We need to move and build the people awareness about environmental issues and push our government to fix this problem as partners. Then, we hope government can build independent institution for monitoring and investigating of environmental problem, especially for the realization of UU 32 tahun 2009. Last one, we believe building more effective social media usage will bring proper distribution resources to knowledge about our environmental issues. Actually, that's enough from our group voices. Feel free to give positive input for us. Thank you so much. And to end our presentation, guys. Recover stronger!
Thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause. That was a very dense recommendations. So we have one that was actually mentioned from the previous group, which is the usage of social media and how to disseminate information and how to run campaign. And then, you also touch on a very important global commons, that is the ocean, the marine and the ocean. It is important to keep the sustainability. And now, I'm going to move to Group 9. You have, please introduce yourself, and you have two minutes.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Chika. I'm representative from South Kalimantan, from Lambo McCourt University, major in environmental engineering. So we are from Group 9, and we're going to talking about circular economy, sustainable production and consumption. So in current situation based on research right now, 90% young people already thinking about our planet. But the young people need good quality education about our planet to raise youth awareness, and we need a facilities for it. And don't forget about government program, like example, funding from government. And also, we need a government regulation for producer or factory or company for producing sustainable product and being an eco-friendly company. So first of all, the basic that youth need is good quality education. So the government must make curriculum from basic education system. It's from elementary school until university to build a character, and it will be a lifestyle for a long-term life. So we believe for youth right now, we need to have a role models in their life. And youth should being a role model campaign, be a role model itself, society and people around them. So campaign establishment and influencer should improve a massive to all age. So government must engage the influencer to campaign about environmental lifestyle massively and make it fun such like a TikTok, Instagram, or Facebook. For rural area, education about environmental must be include in their curriculum and more project government can facilitate you to do some project for the people in rural area to increase their awareness about environment. And for the circular economy, by controlling the producing, government have an important rule to make standard and implement their policies strictly and give education and do audit the local company to make sure their complaints about the environment and environment regulation for running their company. And youth can be involved as social control to monitor and evaluate company regarding their environmental aspects. So we need a kind of provide to, apart from people, especially youth government. So, Kanashin, the, our summary is our curriculum environment for basic education and engage the role models. And the second, audit for company and producer about environmental standard. And the last, youth as social control to be involved in monitoring and evaluating the implementation of regulations. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for recapping your recommendations to our delegates. So I will move to Table 10 now. Please introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes to deliver your recommendations.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Nizar. I'm from Tulung Agung Isjawa. So I represent Group 10 to discuss, to present about the safeguarding nature. So what we would like, so we would like to, we would like to bring the issue about the independent smallholders in oil palm in Indonesia. Indonesia is the biggest palm oil producers in Indonesia. And independent smallholders itself, it takes around 40% that minutes of palm oil. So there is a potential as a risk devastation from the independent smallholders. So what we would like to bring the issue is, how could we preserve the planet while most of million independent smallholders are earning their money on the palm oil? So we would like to present on this discussions. So there are several options that we would like to present. So we would like to, we would like to present about one of something that we would like to explore is about the standard. How could we introduce the sustainable standard on the palm oil? So there are two stand certification scheme that on the oil palm. In Indonesia itself, there is a ESO, Indonesian Sustainable Palm Oil, that is mandatory from the government for all oil palm producers. And the one is about the RSPO, Roundtable on Sustainable Palm Oil. That is a voluntary standard that set a set of standard criteria on the palm oil. So we would like to, there are three things that we would like to highlight. First is how to present the environment. Second is how to appreciate the social, how to appreciate the indigenous people, as well as how to think about the smallholder livelihood. And in terms of the incentive, while independent smallholders proven that they can preserve the planet and the social, there is an incentive that they can share. As on the RSPO, recently, there are incentive on independent smallholders is around 3.1 million USD for 41 independent smallholders in Indonesia as kind of incentive that they have preserve the planet. And what we would like to share is about their share responsibility to support the sustainable palm oil. There is a youth, government, investment, and big drivers. There are some of something that we would like to highlight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So you touched upon the oil palm, between the oil palm and the environment tension there and you offered sustainable certifications, sustainable standards to include social values as well. We will now move to Table Eleven, Circular Economy. Please introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
Okay. First of all, my name is Faru Alazari. I'm from Group Eleven. And today I will talk about circular economy. First of all, why does CE not working properly? And we have three points here. First of all, because we are still in the development phase. Indonesia is still focusing on how to build their infrastructure. Because of that, the result is there is a lack of balancing sustainability. And because of that, there is a government focus on infrastructure and forgot about the environment. As example is EKN, our movement to, our moving capital city into Kalimantan, East Kalimantan. And because of that, I think we need to collaborate more with the third party to provide the idea and also sponsor and investor. And the second one is because of the market gap. The market gap of Indonesia is, we still have a problem in there. In Indonesia, we have the, we have middle to low consumer, mostly in Indonesia. And because of that reason, sustainability, sustainable product is not really match into that market. And because of that, government need to create a policy on how to make sure that sustainable product can be affordable for a middle to low class consumer. And also, it's all about the awareness. First, it's all about the self-awareness first. And then, second, we need to focus on how to approach the youth, the young generation through the education. And also, it's not only about the individual, it's also about the government awareness that's mentioned in how they create a policy and also the company awareness about how they need to create a sustainable product. And also, there have some example that can be a leading for now. There's a company called Surplus, which focusing on how to create, how to convert waste to, a waste product into another product. So another example is JCO, the company who convert their product into a more sustainable product. Can you give me example of the product? The JCO? Oh yeah. So basically, they turn the product into animal food. That's the example. And this point is, will not work if we don't have any collaboration. So, Kanasin, I believe we need to have more collaboration and follow-up after this. And thank you.
Thank you very much. You addressed a very important point about access to sustainable product, which was also mentioned previously, that it is unequal because of the different income level. And Table Twelve, at the front, okay. All right. Hello. Who will be speaking from this table? Okay. Please introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My name is Hadi Wijaya. I'm representative of Group Twelve. All right. Natural resources are the single most important input to global economy like raw material, water, protection and biodiversity. Nature provide most of the business capital needs for the productions of goods and services. But sometime, the consume and natural capital can be over-exploitation and it causes research overuse, which can be solved by nature positive growth. And as we know, lungs of the planet is located in Brazil and Indonesia. In Indonesia itself, we have Green Cloud Team, which policy from government that aims to safeguard our environment and natural capital. And their action, their are green growth compact as the initiative program to wheel, to wheel the green development in the case of mining and the economic sector. And we think the policy can be reference for global action. To close our statement, in the application of the green growth compact, it is necessary to mobilize through the strengthening courage of by youth. And one of the preventive measure is to make a special curriculum to protect natural resource. As a youth, we have a rule to mobilize this policy through the real actions that global can see and make it the reference and accept it. We hope we can realize it for better future. I think that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you emphasized the role of youth in mobilizing the sustainable solutions as you're closing. Thank you very much. And now, I would like to invite Nasin, the delegate of Indonesia, to respond to the remarks and the recommendations of our youth. Nasin, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, all of the groups once again for sharing your thoughts. I just want to say also, it requires a lot of courage to voice these opinions. And we are really grateful for everyone to bring your courage here today. So thank you again. To summarize some of the things that have been said, I think one of the threads that came around in this next round of discussions was about green growth. What does that mean for development as well? And one thing that came up in the groups is this idea that it's okay if we don't convert everything to a factory. Yes, one hundred percent. I think when we talk about development is also a difficult concept because when we talk about countries that are more and less developed, I think we need to think more closely about what do we mean by development? Are we following examples that are really headed toward the futures we want? Or are we chasing something that's actually an outdated vision of what development really is? And might we think about not talking about less developed or more developed countries? But what about if we start thinking about the mainstream conversation being less biodiverse and more biodiverse countries? Perhaps this would be a metric where it actually paints a picture of the types of environments that we want. So thank you for bringing this up. We know that conserving at least thirty to fifty percent of the earth is incredibly important for the continuation of organized human society. And to work towards this perhaps requires a different image of what development should look like, one that considers nature as equally, if not more important than the other factors we are also striving for. But nonetheless, the other groups also mentioned the importance of the social factors with the palm oil that we saw. There are, as we saw in the diagram earlier with the circular economy, we want to make sure that everyone has minimum living standards, decent living standards to thrive and survive and do this within the ecological ceiling. And so, one of the suggestions was the certification for supporting small-scale palm holders. I think with the certification, some of the challenges we see is implementation. And one of the ways we can perhaps address this is what are the ways in which certification schemes can support not large agro businesses, but the small-scale farm holders? Because this is how we're going to grow crops and plantations with biodiversity at the forefront instead of monocultures dominating everything. I think another thread that came up also, again, that came up earlier was about awareness. And I think one of the things I was very happy to hear is how do we use the tools we have, like social media, make things go viral, like TikTok? I think this is really important. We need to meet residents halfway. We need to see what are people already doing? How do we take advantage of these existing habits? We are spending so many hours of the day on the social media. Let's direct that attention towards things that are productive, things that are collaborative, instead of things that are exploitative. So I think this is an incredible suggestion about making awareness go viral. I am, I think this is something that could be very strong in Indonesia, one of the largest social media usage countries in the world. And an excellent thought about learning from the behaviors that already exist and meeting that halfway. So yes, we see that there are certain patterns of behavior that need to change. But how do we do this in a way that's realistic? We start from what's here. We don't erase everything. We start from what's here. We figure out how do we move forward from where we are to move to the places we want. I think that's it. Thank you so much again, everybody. And I think we're going to pass it on to...
We're going to pass it on to the floor. Thank you very much. Oh, we already have one person who would like to voice his thoughts. And, okay, okay. All right, let's do this. One, two, three, four. All right, let's go in that direction. We have roughly, say, one and a half minutes, so we can get everyone's voice. Please introduce yourself.
Chik, chik, chik. Okay. Thank you, everyone. My name is Rehan Abra Ramadan and I'm representative from West Kalimantan, Pontianak. So, okay, the biggest valuable assets that I would like to point is actually the people itself, the human. And one of the valuable assets to that is indigenous people itself. But I find it in the policy report that I have gathered in West Kalimantan. It was not just about how do we get benefit from the plantation, from palm, for example, but for example, the main problem was a local conflict between people and the company itself. Okay, let's say that the company was get benefit, but who, for who is the target? I mean, like for the benefit. The conflict was not getting a better resolution. I mean, like, people don't know how to report the problem. Even if they report the problem, the problem was not resolved very good. So I would like to ask, because I mean, like, in our government situation, it was repressive rather than preventive. Because in our city, it's always like the conflict comes up first and then we have the, I mean, like, the repressive situation, resolution of that. So what is your take about on how could we manage to solve this problem so that the indigenous people get the benefit and the company could actually do their job too? But like what we say, thinking forward, nature should not hurt the indigenous people. But from what I saw, what I saw right now in West Kalimantan especially, it's not pointing to that, actually. And it's been going for like ten years to twenty years right now because indigenous people would not get the benefit from their plan, actually, because they don't have any choice but to sell their land. And it's very unfortunate that we seen some situation like this. I think I would end to that note. Okay, thank you.
Very much. That was such an important question. Let's give him a round of applause. I would like to ask, Nasin, would you like to respond first or do you want to hear from the other participants first? We're going to go around. Okay. I think the second table at the back. Yeah, Table Eight.
Let me introduce myself. My name is Anisa. I'm from Samarinda, East Kalimantan.
Could we increase the volume, please?
Okay.
A bit softer. Audio.
My name is Anisa. I'm from Samarinda, East Kalimantan. Because we are gathering here in Balikpapan, I would like to bring up the local concern, the local issues relevant to the results that have been bring up by the groups. So the first one to the groups that mentioning about reducing consumption, reducing energy consumption, I think it's really relevant to Kalimantan, particularly East Kalimantan, because we have one of the biggest river in Indonesia. And twenty-four seven, twenty-four seven, we have a large part sheep loading coal to the other countries, to Jakarta. And it's been impacting the local environment, the local social system. And the second one, related to the involvement of the youth, I would like to propose if we could emphasize explicitly the involvement of the indigenous youth because there would be the vulnerable group that facing the rapid change of the world and also simultaneously, they will carry on their cultural responsibility. It's really important to mainstream the inclusivity in the process of decision-making. And as a closing, I know that as a youth, we tend to formulate what is ambitious and idealistic solutions. But I would like to suggest, we also, if we could better also consider the condition of the field, so it can be doable. So we consider the doability of all of the stakeholders in the field so that our recommendation can be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank everyone again for their courage to inform the things that are happening on the ground. These are extremely important perspective that we could incorporate in the agenda. I would now like to pass it on to Table Eleven and then we're going to go to Table Two.
Hi, everyone. My name is Halamodania. I am from Kaliorang, very remote area in Kalimantan Timur. And for information, we just got electrified like a year ago. So before that, we don't have electricity, we don't have access to internet and so on and so on. I'm just wondering, your point of view on coal companies that is, you know, spread in East Kalimantan and also in my hometown. I'm wondering your opinion on coal companies because, you know, on the one hand, we condemn the companies because they do deforestation and so on and so on. But on the other hand, there's so many people are dependent on coal companies. They make living. They, you know, make money from that. Even the people from indigenous people, from many areas in Indonesia, they work there and they get money. So, you know. And also, the other impact is that in my hometown, which was, there is no electricity, there was no electricity. After, there are, I think, three companies. There's a cement companies, there is a coal companies and palm oil companies. And because of the existence of those three companies, we got electrified. And then the street is under constructions and the government give us a tower to, you know, access to internet and many more that is coming soon in my hometown. So, yeah, that's my questions. What is your opinion on coal companies? Because there's the positive and negative impacts that we, you know, get from them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now hear from the last responder from Table Two. The floor is yours and then Nasin will have a time to respond.
Thank you very much for the second chance that has been given to me for this beautiful day. I just want to give welcoming to all the participant welcome to Balikpapan because my name is Nurmo Taida again and you can call me Nurro. I'm a teacher in Balikpapan. Originally from Balikpapan, my parents lives in Balikpapan since nineteen and ninety-nine. And then, two days we together here, from yesterday till today. And we're talking about more about environment and anything about the economy system. And also, it's happy to be together here. It's happy to be thinking about anything that we can build together to our planet. But don't forget, when you come to Balikpapan, you have to bring some service. you have to bring some souvenir from Balikpapan after this. But I just want to give you a suggestion that you should eat mantau Balikpapan and also you should eat soca crab from Balikpapan. But additional information from the educational in Balikpapan. Since I am as a student, when I was in elementary student, I learned about the educational major, namely PKLH. Maybe the student from Balikpapan know about PKLH. Or PKLH is Pendidikan Kesehatan dan Lingkungan Hidup, or educational for cleanest and environment. That's we learn since we are young until right now. And I have asked my friends from the teacher in elementary and senior high school, our primary high school. They talk about that since right now, every single student learn about PKLH and learn about this topic major. And this is that I know that I ever asking to my friends to any place in Indonesia, they doesn't know about this. They don't know about PKLH. What is PKLH? And I, I just know that PKLH is originally made by the governor of, the governor of Balikpapan. So the book is printed by the Pemprov, which is the Pemerintah Kota Balikpapan. And then we learn about this. So maybe I can give you suggestion as the educational. Maybe perhaps after this, Nashin can search about PKLH book. And all of the things inside the PKLH book, we learn about how we divided the trash from three items and then how we care, take care about the environment and how we take care about also what is that? The forest, which is in Balikpapan, we have so many forests nearby the Samarinda, nearby the Tenggarong and any others place forest in Balikpapan. I think that's all for me. Thank you very much for the attention and thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now pass in to Nashin to respond to the four questions that the participants have asked.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for the questions. And also, it's wonderful to hear that Balikpapan has such a foundational educational system already. I think that's the start of many, many things. Maybe to address the question about the coal plants and the electricity. Definitely, nothing is ever black and white. There are, things are complex, and this is why we have discussions like this today. Of course, there are benefits and that we want to make sure people have access, equal access to electricity, to internet, to opportunities. But there are also ways to do this in ways that do not exploit the environment to the point of collapse. So I think the reason that the, we see this expansion, why does coal move so much more quickly? It's because it's supported in one way by the, by, not only by governments, but like a systemic global system that doesn't account for the cost of extracting that coal in the future. It doesn't count for the cost of that. What impact does that have seven generations from now? But relating to a point earlier, what if indigenous knowledge is brought to the forefront? Indigenous knowledge that where decisions made today take into account the impact they're going to have seven generations into the future? I think what needs to happen is that kind of knowledge needs to be brought to the forefront, not as an inclusivity one-off thing, but actually as main decision-makers. And we see there's so much knowledge in indigenous and local communities. There is a need to legitimize that knowledge. When we talk about, we hear a lot of talk now about listen to the science. But I think we need to be careful. What, what does our world count as science? There is also barriers to what is, what makes it to reports. And I think there needs to be much greater efforts in bringing that indigenous knowledge to the forefront. This is a legitimate form and it is, should be one of the leading forms of knowledge, especially when it comes to conserving the environment. Because it has been proven that the best conservers of the environment are people who live there. And so definitely, that social factor is incredibly important. People are not separate from the environment. We are part of it. And so when we talk about nature and culture or nature and social, they are one thing. They're not two separate things. And thank you for bringing that point up. I definitely think institutionalizing these things much more strongly and systematically is important. And our things, we must move towards and that we will, together. And finally, there was a point about, that related to global supply chains. I have this note written down because it was, it's saying that we're building all these, either palm oil plantations or we're building all these coal mines that are destroying the local environment here, and they're being exported to Jakarta or they're being exported to other countries in the world. This is really important because, as was mentioned earlier, Indonesia is home to the largest palm oil production in the world. But who is the consumer of that palm oil? Palm oil products are in almost all of our daily uses, like in toothpaste. It's in makeup, it's in our food. And so this is a global system. And that's why it's not just up to one government. It's not just up to one institution. But there needs to be a change at a systemic level where when we talk about the palm oil industry, it's not just about what's happening in Indonesia and not just about the plantation within this one site in Kalimantan. But actually, where is that impacting towards? Maybe one of the ways that we can address this is that when we count the greenhouse gas emissions or the resource extractions of other countries, it's not just about what's produced in those countries, but what those countries consume, where do they come from? Whose extraction does it rely on? That needs to be accounted for as well because it's part of a much larger global system. So thank you for bringing that point up. Again, raising the importance of having this discussion emerge from a local context, but then being held responsible and accountable and being brought to a global context that it's really something that all countries need to address together to make sure that we have equal and fair rights for the environment, for people who are part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nashin. I think it was a very interesting discussion on how global supply chain, global economy translate to the local level here. I will now pass the floor to some of the delegates that are here. I think we have some delegates from Japan and also observers from multilateral institution. I would like to invite them to respond to the participants here and to the discussion. Yes, we have an observer.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Tata Jitsai Santaputra. I am the observer delegate for ASEAN, originally from Bangkok. It's so lovely to be with everybody here today. I just wanted to say that I'm very inspired and I admire everybody who's been, you know, doing these focus groups and I've been speaking. A lot of the things that everybody has mentioned are things that we in our Sustainable and Liveable Planet Track in the delegations have been discussing. And we have very similar ideas. So it's very, very inspiring. And it's good to know that like we are also bring the same ideas, the same concerns about the global commons, about circular economy, about also using influencers and using TikTok and all the social medias. So it's very, it's very amazing. I'm sure that Nashin agrees with me on this, that even though you guys are so much younger and you guys are, you know, there's such bright futures ahead of you, the ideas that you're bringing is very similar to the ideas that we're discussing. We have, we, it's very difficult to put it into policies and have very strict numbers, but we're definitely trying very hard. And you know, whatever you're saying today, like, we are definitely taking that forward. We're bringing that into our discussions for our, on record tracks tonight and also the communique that will come out after July. So thank you, everybody, and thank you for your efforts.
I would like to pass on to the floor to another delegates who, and observers who are attending this town hall. This is a good opportunity to respond to the discussions and get more local point of view over here.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Marcel. I'm a co-delegate of Indonesia for digital transformation with Nashin. So a few things I wanted to say. I think that point about making sure that we balance between, you know, ensuring there's access to connectivity, because that's a priority area for digital transformation. This is why I want to emphasize the key point of really preparing for adaptation. Because adaptation to new habits, new behaviors, that's important and it requires everyone. Everyone's been mentioning this a lot. It's a pentahelix approach. So that's one other thing that I wanted to respond to as well. Following the communique, as Nashin mentioned, this is only the first step for us as Indonesian delegates. We really feel a lot of aspirations from every single pre-summit we go to, from Palembang, Lombok, and now to Balikpapan. And soon, we're going to Manokwari as well. So what are we really saying here? At the Y20 level, you have to remember, it's 20 different countries and it has to be consensus-based. What does that mean? That means that some of the policies you mentioned are very specific to certain countries. So we can't go into too much detail on implementation in our commiques. However, this is why after the communique, we will engage with the ministries. We will engage with the different working groups. We will engage with local governments to ensure that it is implemented as well. But one thing I want to emphasize is your role. All of you guys and your local presence here and everywhere you're from, you know, North Kalimantan, East Kalimantan, West Kalimantan, you are the future of your local governments as well. Because you know this, in Indonesia, you know, sometimes they say, oh, ini bukan wewenangnya kementrian pusat, ya kan? Wewenangnya sama daerah, right? So the authority is sometimes with Pemprov. Nah, kalau misalnya wewenangnya di daerah, how are we going to be able to pressure from central government, right? Sometimes it requires you voice it out as well. You have power in your local communities to voice to your Walikota, to voice to your governor, to make sure that they also include your decision-making capabilities and, you know, indigenous people as well. That's really important, right? So that's why when we talk about the pentahelix approach, it's beyond just coming up with policies. It's also implementing policies. So we will support at the Y20 level to ensure that across G20 countries, we agree on the same principles. We all agree on the same principles. But following that, we also ensure that the ministries can help at a central level. But the local governments and local youth, you guys also need to make sure you keep your governments accountable. And so we hope that this will continue going forward. The communique is the first step. And you might not see very specific policies. We'll try, obviously, because it's a global communique. We agree on principles. But the implementation will be needed, not only at the national level, but at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marcel. Now, we would like to invite one more delegate. And then I will pass the floor to the participants here to respond to what the delegates and observers have said. Is there any other delegates that would like to speak? Okay. If not, I will pass in to the participants to respond. Who would like to respond to the delegates and observers' remarks? Yes, we have one over there.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sutari. I'm the representative of Group 10. First of all, I'm really thankful for this forum because this is such a new forum, especially for Balikpapan people and the youth. This is the first time like international event is happened in here. And to respond to the delegates' information about how we balancing between the people, planet, and profit. I think we're talking about that, how we compare Indonesia as a development countries to like the more, such as US, Europe, and so on, that already have more complex policy in terms of sustainability. I think there's a different approach where when, in the other countries, we can say that we develop the policy issue about the environment first. So we talk about the planet first. But it's different in Indonesia where much, so many people still talk about the profit first. So how we can be profitable? How we can make sure that the company will still grow? So I will talk in the perspective of the entrepreneurs where there is several delegates in here talks about reducing the price of the sustainable products. I think it cannot be implemented yet because in the realistic condition where we produce something that more sustainable, it should be more pricey. So I think what we can do in this forum is to give recommendation to like the governments. Is it possible to us to get like the certificate? For example, if we talk about certification, the price is very expensive. It's so hard to the small companies to get that certification to become more eco-leveling. Even in Indonesia, we don't have eco-leveling. So it means that it's very hard to us to get that sustainable mindset to the customers. So if there is possible, maybe Nashin and other delegates can give recommendation to other government to give like the policy about giving like the subsidy for the entrepreneurs or also the government community to education about the, to give education about the sustainable taxes and so on, and also the certification. I think it's important to get education to the young people and also the entrepreneurs. I think, yeah, I think that's my recommendation. Thank you.
We have time for two more responses? Yes. Oh. From the participants, from the participants of Kalimantan. And then maybe we'll go to you very quickly. Does anyone have any more questions, any more remarks?
Okay, thank you so much for your opportunity. Let me introduce myself. My name is Nicola Kaliangriawan, and I'm the track officer for ASLP. Also, I'm a social anthropology student from Universitas Indonesia. It's really a pleasure to hear from all of the youth that you get the same mindset in regards to sustainable, livable planet. And according to what I learned in social anthropology, it is truly important that to know that we live in a damaged planet and we need to create a transformation, especially in regards to behavioral. And based from what I learned from Anna Singh, she is an anthropologist, really great, we need to, we need to hear, we need to listen from the ghost of the landscape. Where we see maybe some sort of destruction, we need to know what we as youth has in order to change. And I'm very loving this kind of solution in regards to raising awareness or maybe incorporating curriculum with in regards to achieving sustainable sustainability. And that's all that I can say. Thank you so much for everyone in here. And well, I'm very happy that we have so much bright, bright youth in here. And yeah, I'm very much optimistic for the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Nicole. I would like to again invite the participants from IYD Kalimantan. This is the opportunity to raise any point that some of, that maybe it's important for global leaders to understand, it's important for the delegates to understand. So this is an excellent opportunity to raise any of that concerns or even questions for the delegation.
Let me introduce again. My name is Anisa. I'm from Samarinda, East Kalimantan. I just would like to have technical questions related to the draft of the communique. Is there any possibility for us or for youth as a public to give an input before you finalize the communique to the presidency? Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, I would like to pass the floor to Nashin to respond to that question.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I think this is the forum and for sure, you can, we can continue to have the discussion. This is exactly what this is for, for those inputs. And as was mentioned by our fellow delegates as well, many of our delegates, that this is the forum where we are, it's really important to hear all of these inputs because these are going directly in to our considerations for the communique. As Janeine stated, that we're going to have discussions today, tonight. And it's really great that she is able to join us. It's not just, it's, many of us are here from the Sustainable, Livable Planet Track, taking into account these considerations to be brought up, not just tonight, but in our continued deliberations as well. In addition to that, you, we hope that we will continue the conversation with everyone here and have this continuous round of feedback. So definitely, we want this to be an inclusive process, that's a long-term conversation to make sure that these points are really brought in. I hope that answers the technical question. And then to answer the question that came before that about certain things like barriers to certification and differences, differences in access to resources, this is very important. And this is the point of the G20, to recognize that there are differences. Part of them have been historical differences. But the fact is that we have to account for them now. And that even, you may have heard of the term. And that even you may have heard of the term common but differentiated responsibilities. We're working towards a common goal, but recognizing that everyone has a different level of responsibility based on historical contributions. So when we talk about the future, we must not forget what happened in the past and account for those into how do we divide these responsibilities in a fair way? But in a way that also make sure that any new developments that come from now are looking ahead and not looking behind to ways, to the ways things were, but looking ahead to how we want to move forward. So in that way, everyone still has a responsibility to move forward. There will be different levels. And this is why the topic of knowledge sharing becomes so important. As mentioned earlier, like what we saw with the vaccines, some countries had greater resources to both for the research and the implementation of that. Other countries did not. That is not a fault of those countries, that are a result of historical and systemic imbalances. But these are things that we can learn and correct from. And so just as we know the importance of knowledge transfer, the point of bringing this to the G20 countries as some of the largest economies in the world is to make sure that we have just knowledge transfer, just technology transfer, not only within the G20 groups, but everyone outside of that as well. Because we know the decisions made by the G20 influence far greater than 20 countries. So definitely that is something that is part of these discussions. Thank you for bringing it up. Yeah, and I think that's all.
We have a couple more minutes and time for everyone to respond. So not just the delegation, not just the participants, maybe if someone from the, yes, we have one person there and two, another, okay. I'll give the, I'll try to get to you. But just a reminder that this event is live stream. So the people in the audience in this room is not the only people who can hear your voices. So it's a good reminder to voice out your comments and aspirations.
This is how? Good afternoon. I'm Muhammad Ali Rahman from Group 9 from South Kalimantan. And I would like to tell you that what happened about environmental issues in South Kalimantan. If you have ever heard that from January to March last year, there was a major flood and landslide that hit eleven district or cities in South Kalimantan province. This could be a momentum for the overall protections of the Meratus Mountains area as a water absorption porous from exploitation that causes environmental damage in this essential area. Of course, Kalimantan, a lot of local residents were affected. They lost their homes, jobs and even yesterday. Apart from that, we need politicians who are concerned about the environmental policies. We really need preventive measures to avoid lessening the coal mine in Meratus so that this big flood and landslide won't happen again. Because this is a real example of a major environmental problem in South Kalimantan syndicates. I just want to convey that what we need now is so, is to strictly limit and prevent meaning permits that can damage Meratus, which must be supported and monitored directly by the central government and the surrounding community instead of just making policies. Thank you.
I think we have another, yes, a super quick one from table six and then a really quick one from table two. And then our co-chairs would like to do a response to your questions.
Hi, everyone. I'm Saka Agin. So as previously been mentioned, that implementation of ideas is more important than delivering ideas itself, right? But from the government point of view, you have to see it from a larger scale, right? Because when you're the government, you have to consider many people's political interests. For example, your voters' interest, the interest of your election sponsors, the interest of your political party that you're in, right? So my question is, do you think it is possible when youth like us wanted to be involved in a toxic political system, to be able to hold in our principles and to be able to hold in our idealism when there are so many political demand and political interests that we have to consider? Thank you very much.
That is a very classic question for all the young people who would like to participate in politics. Thank you for raising that question. Really quickly, maybe one minute, less than one minute, and then we will invite everyone else to respond.
Thank you very much for the short chance that has given to me for this morning. This may be the short question. What is the suggestion that the Nasin and all the delegates here can give to us as the youth in Balikpapan especially and the youth in East Kalimantan to do right now? But we are not just waiting for the result after the forum, but maybe we can start it from right now. So any suggestion from you that we can apply it after we go out from this place? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can I invite Michael, our co-chair, to share his response right here?
Well, thank you, everyone. Great discussion. I've been following not just what you have said representing each group, but I also participated in some of the groups, listening to what you have to say. And as co-chair of U20, it is our responsibility as the organizing committee to make sure that all that you have discussed and the key points will be brought to the U20 summit in Jakarta and Bandung. And we will also ensure that your voice will be heard by the president, Mr. Jokowi. Because the communique, once it has been finalized as the tradition from previous twenty, is that we hand it over directly to the president. So we hope that all the input you have given to us and the discussion that we have will be very influential in how we shape and finalize the communique. We still have two months to the summit. We will also try to find ways in which your participation will be continued. There will be constant back and forth input, feedback. Understand many of you are questioning or asking, what's next after this? There is also a question that we have in U20 committee, what's next after U20 summit? So it's a question that we will have to answer together. And some of you mentioned about the role of the government, politics and so on. That's the reality of decision-making in Indonesia and in many other countries. So we need to keep on getting involved, interact and lobby the government. That's why we are conducting this event together with the ministry and also the local governments. Because we understand that the only way moving forward is if we can engage the youth and also the government or people who are in power, who have power today. So again, thank you for all your participation. And I understand also there are many questions that are still unanswered, which is okay. Our role here is not just to give answer or solution, but we need to write, ask the right question. And you've been doing that for the past two hours. So we are looking forward to what the delegates will do at the summit. And hopefully the committee, the local committee as well, will be able to bring back the result, the communique and deliver it to you guys. And then we can talk about what's next that we can do together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. We will now close this session. But before I pass it on to the emcee, I would like to say the greatest thank you to everyone for being courageous. Can we have a round of applause for the participants and for raising your voice and for asking important questions? So now we will pass it on to the emcee.
Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, once again, give a round of applause for all the local youth for a great discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of Y20 organizing committee, we would like to thank all the sponsors who have contributed to the success of the third pre-summit of Y20 Indonesia 2022. Sustainable and Livable Planet, BPD Kaltim Kaltara, Aruna Indonesia, Apikal PT Kutai Refinery Nusantara, KPW Bank Indonesia, Balikpapan. We are already at the end of the town hall meeting. And now let us all enjoy the lunch with some of the Indonesia's finest cuisine that we have prepared for you. After lunch, we will be taking a city tour to Mangrove Margo Mulio and Kabun Raya Balikpapan. We would like also to remind you of this evening agenda. Do not miss the second talk show, which will be about promoting secular economy at 7:00 PM. On behalf of the Y20 co-chairs and the organizing committee from Indonesian Youth Diplomacy, we thank you for attending the town hall meeting of the third pre-summit Y20 Indonesia 2022, Sustainable and Livable Planet. We thank you for your time and your contribution. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and good afternoon.